All right. Good morning. My name is Chase Nishii, Chairperson of the Authority. I'd like to call to order the June 6, 2024 Public Hearing of the Hawaii Community Development Authority. And the time is now nine oh three.
Thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Community Development Authority is holding today's public hearing both virtually on Zoom and in person. The Zoom link details were included in the public hearing notes. Therefore, members of the public are welcome to join us on Zoom. We're at the physical meeting site at the American Brewery Building, 547 Queen Street, 2nd Club Boardroom, Honolulu, Hawaii 96813. The ACDA Communications Staff is hosting the Zoom portion of this meeting, hearing. Once this public hearing begins, everyone will be muted for clear audio. Board members, if you have any comments or questions, please unmute yourselves to speak. It is important that all individuals clearly state their name each time prior to speaking. If you wish to provide oral testimony and you are attending virtually, please indicate so by clicking the raise hand button found on your Zoom screen. If you are attending in person, you will be called to the front of the room with the order that you signed up. All testimony will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. Your testimony must be directly related to the public hearing subject. Before you begin your testimony, ask that you identify yourself and spell your name for the record. When one minute is remaining, one minute remains will be called out. When thirty seconds is remaining, thirty seconds remain, you will be called out. When time has elapsed, time will be called out, after which you will have thirty seconds to conclude your testimony, and then your audio will be turned off. If you are attending in person, the presiding officer will call the next testifier. Keep in mind that this is an opportunity to share your thoughts with us. If you ask questions during your testimony, neither the board nor the staff is required to provide an answer. If the Authority's connection for the remote meeting is lost, the hearing will be recessed until the connection is restored. If the connection cannot be restored within thirty minutes, the hearing will be reconvened tomorrow, June 7, 2024, at 9:00 AM, at the same physical location and virtual Zoom link as today's hearing. Thank you, Chair.
Let the record reflect, the following Kalailoa members are present. Vice Chair Higa. Here, Miranda Johnson, member Miranda Johnson.
Here.
Member Nassar. Excuse, member Stripes.
Here.
Member Evans.
Here.
Member Ray.
Here.
Yeah, Quorum, thank you. All right, we have Quorum. This time, would the counsel for the applicant make their appearance?
Hi, good morning. Chair Nishii, Executive Director Nakamoto, members of the ACDA staff, Brian Kang, appearing on behalf today of Hunt Community Hawaii LLC.
Morning, Council. For legal basis and purpose, today's public hearing is being convened under the provisions of Chapter 15-215 and 15-219 Hawaii Administrative Rules and Section 206D-5.6 Hawaii Revised Statutes to consider the following matter. The applicant is Hunt Communities Hawaii LLC. The development permit application number is KL23-005. The project is Hunt Parcel 10 Improvements. The tax map key is 9-1-013-097. The address is 91-1049 Enterprise Avenue, Couple in Hawaii 96707. Project description: The applicant is proposing renovations to interior and exterior of the existing Quonset Hut Warehouse Building on Parcel 10. Interior renovations shall include upgrades and repairs to the aging structural, mechanical, and electrical systems, including improvements to egress corridors and fire sprinkler alterations. Exterior work will include repainting, warehouse door replacements, and lighting repairs and replacements. Stike work will include essential upgrades to the aging electrical infrastructure for connection to eco lines and security improvements to secure the perimeter of Parcel 10. Improvements are to include the installation of new fencing to augment the site's existing fencing. In conjunction with this development permit, the applicant is also requesting the following variants from the Kalailoa Community Development District Rules. Variants number one: Increasing the permitted height of the proposed fences along Randolph Street and Enterprise Avenue from three feet to eight feet. The second variant: Permitted height of the VIP towing site fence from three feet to six feet. And the third variant: authorizing the use of chain link security fencing material for all of the fences. The material will include a black colored embedded mesh fabric to cover the chain link fence. Legal notice: A public hearing notice was published in the Honolulu Star-Advertiser Maui News, The Garden Isle, Hawaii Tribute Herald, and Westway today on Friday, May 3, 2024. Chair.
Procedures for the hearing: This is a hearing to consider the modification request by the applicant. Let me briefly explain our procedures for today's public hearing. The ACDA staff will first present its report summarizing the amendments requested in the development permit application. Following that presentation, we will receive presentation of of the applicant and then testimony from the public. Only members of the Authority and the Executive Director will be permitted to ask questions of the staff, applicant, or individuals providing testimony. I'll be acting as the presiding officer for this hearing. Are there any questions to these procedures? If not, we will now begin our proceedings. ACDA's Director of Planning and Development, Ryan Tam, will now present the staff report. Right?
Good morning, Chair Nishii and Board members. Again, the staff report is in your packet and has been uploaded for public review. I did want to again acknowledge the hard work of the staff, Shaliloka and the rest of the team. Um, I also did want to highlight just a few items for the Authority to just familiarize with the site and I'll defer the full description to the applicant. Yeah, I'm going to share. So again, just uh, on the screen, I'm showing a figure one from the staff report, which is again a copy of the variance map, the vicinity map. Again, here in this aerial photo, you can see the central area of Kalailoa. Roosevelt Avenue and Saratoga Avenue are at the top of the, are at the top of the figure. The airport and the runways are at the bottom to the Makai. We're looking at Parcel 10, which is a small triangular site right down towards the bottom of the screen. Again, just a closer figure two, which is the aerial photo. Again, where the site is bounded by Enterprise Street on the left. Randolph Street, which is below near the 3.8 symbol, and then Monterey Street, which is above. So again, it's a very industrial area. Just again, the site plan, the fence modifications are shown in the colored colored areas. By purple and some purple. And then just a figure four, which is just a view of the Enterprise, the view of the site from Enterprise Street. So that's as it is today. So again, the staff report is in your packet. Again, some of the issues to consider, self-created hardship, minimal deviation, the capture of the transit zone, and then no adverse impact. Again, we do leave that the post very needs these criteria. So again, subject to your questions.
Thank you. Is there any questions in regards to the staff report? And for the records, Vice Chair Higa joined us at 9:13. The members, do you have any questions? If not, what do we begin? Will counsel for the applicant please make your appearance?
I do have a quick question.
Sorry, member Stripes, sure.
I was wondering if, Ryan, you could just clarify. I saw under the page three uniqueness, a mention of remediation area. Could, could you go into any more detail on that? Is there, there's known contaminants there?
I'm sorry to interrupt, Chair Nishii, and maybe this might expedite a few things. The applicant intends to withdraw the request for variance for that six proposed six-foot fence along that adjacent VIP towing site. So it has now decided to maintain that fence there, and so will withdraw its variance request for that adjacent. In case that.
Okay. Did you hear that, member Stripes?
Yes, so that's the area that was in reference to the remediation area. Okay, thanks.
Yeah. It's the former home site.
Thank you. Any other questions, members? Staff report. If not, will counsel for the applicant please make your appearance and introduce your party?
Sure. Good morning, Chair Nishii, Brian Kang, appearing on behalf of applicant Hunt Communities Hawaii LLC.
Do you have any additional exhibits to admit?
Hunt has no additional exhibits to admit at this time.
The Authority acknowledges there are no additional exhibits offered by the applicant. Then we will now proceed with the hearing. You may now call your first witness.
Thank you, Chair Nishii. For purposes of the record and to just clarify again, the statement I indicated earlier, Hunt is going to be withdrawing the request for a variance for the adjacent site to the Quonset Hut, to the east of the Quonset Hut, which is been, we've been referring to it as a VIP towing site. And just so that the record is clear as well, I'll go ahead and show my screen here. So, the VIP towing site, and this is Exhibit 20. Let's see if I believe it's slide 29 for purposes of the record. The adjacent VIP towing site goes on the right side of this range, this kind of rectangular box, which I'm indicating. So that was subject to a variance request to maintain the six-foot fencing there, and this is the area in which Hunt will be withdrawing the variance request. So the variance request will only relate to the eight-foot fence indicated in light blue on this slide, which connects to an existing eight-foot fence, which is indicated kind of in a pink red color on the slide. So just for purposes of the record, I'm just clarifying that. Thank you.
And sorry, so this can be, the only variance you're asking for is the change in the height along Randolph Street and Enterprise Avenue going from three feet to eight feet. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. In addition to that, we also made a request for kind of a mesh material to be used in the fencing, and as the witnesses will testify to, that mesh material will only be along Randolph Street. And there is existing mesh material on the existing fence indicated in red on this, on this slide. So to match that, that mesh with your.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there are no further questions, Hunt will call its first witness, Kathleen Eriarte.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will be providing is the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Good morning, Ms. Eriarte. Can you please restate your name and position?
Good morning, Chair, Board, and Staff. My name is Kathleen Eriarte. I'm an Assistant Development Manager at Hunt Communities Hawaii.
And can you please briefly summarize Hunt's requested variances from the strict application of the Kalailoa Community Development District Rules for parcel?
Because a project includes a security chain link fence on a portion of the property, we do have two requests. First one is to keep the height of the fence at eight feet tall. And this is for a portion of the area along Randolph and Enterprise, which is taller than the prescribed three feet maximum height. And I emphasize the word keep because it is, it's it was installed in 2021 within SAI from the Department of Planning and Permitting. And the existing fence is consistent with the neighboring properties that have fences that are eight feet or nine feet tall with the barbed wire header. And then I have this image up, so you can see where the arrow is pointing. That's the delineation between, so anything to the right was an existing fence. When we received the property from the Navy, that was existing, and that pink fabric was also there. Everything to the left is the new fence that was installed in 2021. So the purpose and the installation rule, we just went along with eight feet and also did not do the block mesh to for the consistency. So that's a summary of our variance request, the height and the mesh.
And why is Hunt requesting these variances to the rules?
We have three reasons for making this request. The first one is to enhance security. The extra height of an eight-foot fence can act as a deterrent to intruders and unauthorized visitors, making it difficult to climb over and compared to a shorter fence, and to prevent theft. And this is critical for our industrial and commercial tenants who store equipments and materials. The second reason is to increase privacy. Just an eight-foot tall fence, it does provide greater privacy, especially when they're storing expensive equipment. And the third reasoning was just to improve the property boundaries. A taller fence does make it easier to define the property boundaries, especially along a major road, like there are fairway like Enterprise.
And are there any unique physical conditions peculiar to or inherent in Parcel 10 such that there are practical difficulties or hardships arising from strictly compliant to the rule?
Yeah, and if we can go to the first slide, that might help us with this. So Parcel 10 presents certain unique special conditions. In particular, Parcel 10 is exposed to multi-street intersections facing Yorktown, Enterprise, and Monterey Street, which exposes the property to additional traffic and multi-points of entry. Sorry, slide two. The new fence was constructed to replace a deteriorating fence and to match the height of an existing eight-foot tall fence. That was, so the existing fence is about 300 linear square feet long, and the additional new fence is less than 500. Given the exposure to the surrounding street, the low fencing for Parcel 10 prohibits light industrial tenants from protecting expensive valuables and equipment. Annually, we spend probably close to $50,000 square, $50,000 on security. This includes our roving guards and live monitoring cameras that we do have. Based on the point in time count, we also know that there is a high increase on the homeless population. Then last year, we've seen about a 22% increase. The property damage and the waste left on the property by loiterers does put a burden on our maintenance team and our operational expenses. And lastly, given the historic nature of the structure on Parcel 10, and I'm referring to the Quonset Hut, it does limit our options to alter the building and tailoring security features to meet the unique physical condition of the property.
And can you please briefly summarize the effects on Parcel 10 if the standards in the rules were to be strictly enforced for this, for this parcel?
And the strict enforcement of these rules relating to the architectural standards would expose Parcel 10 to undue security and safety concerns, and that would not meet the reasonable needs of a prospective tenant. In addition, the tenants would be limited to the type of materials, equipments that can be stored outside of the Quonset Hut. A lot of these equipments sometimes are not able to fit into the warehouse, and so the outside space is really critical to their operations.
And do you believe that granting these references are in the best interest of the Kalailoa district?
Yes, so granting the variances will enable the maximum viable mixed commercial and industrial uses for Parcel 10 with the proper security features, which in turn will advance the vision for the Kalailoa Master Plan to foster a sustainable environment, urban environment.
And will these requested variances, in your view, and the strict application, or will strike that, will the requested variances of the strict application of the rules, in your view, endanger the health, safety, or welfare of the Kalailoa district?
No, instead, we believe the requested variance will enhance the safety and welfare of the Kalailoa Community Development District by facilitating a robust and secured property that can serve our commercial tenants. If we go to slide six, I wanted to add. Yeah, that was fine. So I wanted to note that the requested variances will allow Hunt to include security and safety features that are common among the surrounding areas. On this image that we have here, you can see that on the west of Enterprise and Yorktown, those fences are all eight feet tall. And the areas highlighted in the light blue, those are all nine feet tall chain link fences with the barbed wire, so it does blend in with the community, the surrounding areas.
All right. Thank you very much, Chair Nishii. Hunt has no further questions for Ms. Eriarte at this time. She is available for any questions from the board.
Members or Executive Director, you have any questions for this witness?
Chair, just one clarifying question. Fencing around that you're going to put in, it does not have barbed wire on the top.
No, and we don't plan on adding that.
Yeah, you did mention it. That was my question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, members? If not, thank you very much. You may now call your next witness.
Thank you, Chair Nishii. Hunt's next witness is Dean Akuli.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you could provide is the truth?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Good morning, Chair Nishii and Board members.
Hi, good morning. Can you please restate your name and your employment, please?
My name is Dean Akuli. I'm with DRA Architecture LLC.
And Mr. Akuli, thanks for joining us. Can you also please just very briefly summarize from an architectural perspective, the variances of the strict application of the Kalailoa rules being requested here?
Yes, as was stated and discussed, Hunt is requesting variance from strict application of HRA from using a three-foot fence and extending it up to eight foot along Randolph and also that other streets, sorry, Enterprise. And it's a higher course than what is prescribed for just a three-foot fencing.
And do the Kalailoa, current Kalailoa rules contemplate variances of the strict application of those?
Yes, it does. It permits approval of a variance upon stated findings.
And in your professional opinion, regarding the waiver requested here, what, let's strike that, what are your opinions regarding the waiver of the requested rules here?
In my opinion, the plan to install eight-foot fence for security along these two portions of Parcel 10 fulfills a need and expectations of this type of use for commercial and industrial use that the Kalailoa Master Plan allows. A strict application of the three-foot fencing along this perimeter would not fulfill the expected security for such uses as well. Also, as was mentioned, chain link fence is something common that is used for industrial, commercial use, and it's similar with other parcels that was shown as being used, although we're not using any barbed wire on the top. Parcel 10 occupants would have to contend with exposure if it was not provided, especially with the use of the open lot area. Just too much exposure and allows anything to happen if it's just too short as far as fencing. Also, the requested fence sites are, as was mentioned, consistent with the other fences that exist around the surrounding area. And also with the Quonset Hut, just as a historic nature, we couldn't do too much to promote more security and as well. And so we made that, making that request for a variance to allow the higher fence around the parcel. So in my opinion, the requested variance are just some small deviation from the strict application of the three-foot allowable and security and safety concerns will be addressed by allowing an eight-foot high fence.
And in your professional opinion, are these requested waivers of the rules in the best interest of the Kalailoa district?
Yes, I believe it is. It'll as far as vagrancy or crime, it'll probably curtail that a little bit. And the purpose for this project is to provide tenants and update the parcel to the best as it can, given the circumstances, to allow commercial and industrial companies to want to use the parcel for their use. Also, the property is designated as T3, so as far as the Kalailoa Master Plan, it does allow the use of commercial use, and this produces, or this pulls updates, including the fence, the security fence, is common features that would be required and expected by such users.
And in your professional opinion, will the requested variances of the strict application of the Kalailoa rules here endanger the health, safety, or welfare of anyone within the district?
No, I don't think it would. I believe it would not. In fact, it would probably enhance it. It's will enhance the health, the safety, and the welfare of the Kalailoa Community Development District by allowing the different uses for commercial and industrial, so that it can serve these different types of tenants.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Akuli. Chair Nishii, Hunt has no further questions for this witness, and he is available for any questions from the board.
Thank you. Members or Executive Director, do you have any questions for this witness?
One from the chair.
If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you may call your next witness.
Hunt's next witness is Polly Tyes.
Morning. Could please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will be providing is the truth?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Tyes, can you please restate your name, place, and employment and position?
Sure. Polly Tyes, Research Section Director at Means and Architects.
And you provided written testimony for this variance here. Is that correct? And you also provided your resume, which is marked with an exhibit in this hearing. Is that correct? Chair Nishii, we rest on Ms. Tyes's written testimony for the variance hearing, which has been received into evidence as Exhibit 9, and she is available for any questions from the board.
Members or Executive Director, do you have any questions for this witness?
Not for the chair. Not for the chair.
Thank you very much. You may now call your next witness.
Chair Shi, Hunt has no further witnesses to call for the variance hearing.
Okay. Do you have eight members, do you have any other questions? If not, um, since the notice of public hearing was published on Friday, May third, twenty twenty-four, and written testimony invited as of today, ACDA has received five written testimonies. All five in favor, zero in opposition. We will now take verbal public testimony. Is there any?
Pretty online.
Yes, I think so. Okay, then public testimony online? All right. If there's no further public testimony, I will proceed with closing today's proceedings. Counsel, do you have anything else to add?
Sorry.
I'm behind the color, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, it's Paul.
Yes.
Yes.
Behind the phone. Um, good morning, Chair.
Morning.
Uh, members, um, director and staff. My name is Karen Pulp, and I'm here today um representing the Populi Chamber of Commerce as Executive Director. Um, I would like to to speak to the security issues that were have been mentioned um from a community perspective and and provide some insight that um will um clarify that. I know that um the applicants, as we're perspective, uh representative mentioned, the point in time count on the homeless has increased twenty-two percent in our region in the last year. Um, we are seeing as a a business organization, the impact on our businesses in the region on a larger scale level um to the point that um we are actually working with city officials and looking to address this. Um, and it's costly. Um, and i- in terms of extra security and issues like this with the the variance on this fence do come into play. Um, one thing I do know in particular that may have an impact or does have an impact in this area directly across the street um uh from this this lot is there are five homeless shelters um across the street from Enterprise. And what will often happen within these shelters is the the clients are released because they are non-compliant with their rules. And um they will go and migrate in the region. Uh, you know, causing vandalism, crime, um breaking into areas. And so that really justifies some of the concerns that have been presented today. It's a common occurrence. Many of those directors of those shelters um have had the seen those issues happen as well as um uh the policing officers and HPD. Um, but you know, just in the greater sense, I think we're becoming more vigilant um as a community, and they're having to do these measures to um really prevent crime and be um ahead of it. And we're seeing the impact. I actually even have a a meeting with the mayor on Monday to address some of our regional homeless issues on our businesses, and it's it's getting very, very serious. So I just wanna share that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms.
Is there any other individuals here? For testimony, for test application? No? Okay. If there's no further public testimony, I'll proceed with closing today's proceedings. Counsel, do you have anything else to add?
Uh, Hunt has no further evidence presented this time. Uh, we request that the evidentiary uh portion of the hearing be closed. And on behalf of the Hunt, like to thank the staff very much for all of the efforts in processing the application and the board's consideration of the project.
Thank you. So the record for the public hearing is now closed. Um, and if there's no further comments or discussion, then on behalf of the ACDA Authority members and its staff, I thank you for all your attendance, counsel. You have to the end of the business day of Thursday, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, to file the applicant's proposed findings of fact, conclusions of law and decision in order with the authority. This public hearing on the applicant's requested modifications is now adjourned. A decision-making hearing will be held on Wednesday, July third, twenty twenty-four, at nine AM virtually on Zoom and at the physical meeting site. And this physical meeting site will also be available. This public hearing on the applicant's presentation of his project now stands adjourned. And the time is nine thirty-nine. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.